Hey, you know, we mixed that deal on the trail. They wanted money for that. I was just the impression.
No, that's not what Pope said. He would just.
One fifteen hundred dollars. I thought that was going to be just, you know, charged.
We want to put some down to see how we go to work out.
Exactly. And if there's any cost working in the material.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call the Warren County Commissioners Meeting to Order. Today is September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. Sheriff Williams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business this evening is area plan.
We have one request for an extension of surety for Willow State Subdivision by Thompson Homes, Inc., by Thompson Thompson, President. We're holding a letter of credit totaling fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifteen and forty cents for street sidewalk and drainage construction. They've asked for a one-year extension at that same amount. They've had seven years, and this letter of credit expires October first of two thousand and twenty-two.
Bobby, any commentary?
Just the dollar amount is sufficient.
Very good.
Make a motion to extend the surety.
How many more do they have, Bobby? Do you know lots to go on this?
They're almost completely done. I thought there was just maybe a couple vacant, if any.
Yeah, Jim Morley, Jr., project engineer. They're getting pretty close to having that project built. Thompson Homes did not develop that project originally. They bought it from Al Blasma, I think was the original developer. And they are having to go back in. That project had some unique challenges. And some of the stuff that's left to be done on this letter of credit are dealing with some of those unique challenges. And so they're pretty close on the house side of things to finishing it out. But they've got to go back in and deal with some of the earlier drainage items that were around back when they bought it.
Okay, okay. Thank you for your comments. I make a second motion to approve.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
We have one request to rezone, P C R twenty-two-ten by Westfall and Bestmend L L C by Carl Westfall, the owner, to rezone two point five-three acres on the north side of Van Road, approximately seven hundred feet east of the intersection of Van Road and Prospect Drive from M two general industrial zoning to C four P U D general commercial planned unit development zoning district. Lot four in Work Research Industrial Center number one as recorded in plat file one, page four oh five in the Wark County Recorder's Office, Ohio Township nineteen-six and eight. It's advertised in the standard July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. The A P C gave a unanimous positive recommendation at their meeting held on August eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. I did hand out an extra sheet. This is their primary plat that went with the P U D portion of this development.
Carl, anything else to add?
So I get it passed, it's great.
Carl, I want to say one thing. I'm glad to see you standing up there, my friend.
I am too. Very blessed, thank you. This year's was better than last year, I'll tell you that.
Glad you're here.
Appreciate that.
I have no issues with it. I make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
There you go, my friend.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Good luck.
Can we get ordinance number?
Uh, yes, it is nineteen.
Thank you.
You'll add that to my motion, ordinance number nineteen.
Street construction plans. First item on there is P P twenty-two-eleven, Stall Road Apartments, P U D. This was tabled from the last Commissioners' Meeting, um, August eighth and August twenty-second, and now we're here till today. Um, I believe Bobby had some, the county engineer had some comments.
Um, I believe the traffic impact study is still being reviewed. There's been comments back and forth with the N P O, and I don't think it's been resolved as of yet. So I recommend we table until that can happen.
Glenn Merritt with Cash Wagner. That's my understanding as well. I don't, I can't remember Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday last week. Somebody with N P O brought some comments up. They were directed back to Lock Mueller, and they started responding today. But I don't believe they've got all the answers. Bobby, do you? I haven't read that traffic study. Was most of the questions involving the stall Hepworth intersection? Or?
A lot of it was at stall and Hepworth. There was a little bit at the intersection itself.
At our own intersection.
At your own intersection. And then there were some, uh, some growth rate numbers and things.
Yeah, I did read that.
And the level of service at that. I guess I assume that's the intersection of Hepworth and stall that needed to be considered.
So, so on drainage, we, we made a motion to table to the tenth, right?
Well, drainage was approved today.
Or, or?
Yeah, that was another one.
That was another one? I'm getting them mixed up. All right, never mind.
It's up to the twenty-sixth. I guess when is the next?
Twenty-sixth.
Okay. That's why I'd be asked that we move to that. If something happens, and say this is completely out of my hands, it's in Lock Mueller group and with N P O to try to get resolved, I would hope that it gets resolved in two weeks. If something does.
So table to the twenty-sixth, and make a motion to table to the September twenty-sixth meeting.
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Right.
Thank you.
My motion carries three zero.
Hey, I got a question real quick. Steve mentioned something about you bringing up Magnolia. Is that to be brought up after what happened at Drainage? Or is that?
I'm not aware of anything what happened at Drainage, so.
We table that till the tenth.
That, that's.
It's October.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're going to move roads for Magnolia till then, too, correct?
It'd go a lot quicker if you just removed a little bit of curb.
I'm not getting into that. There's a long discussion at Drainage Board between Chris and these guys. I'm staying.
So the question is, we can't approve anything on streets without approving the drainage.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't need to stick around to discuss it. It was all I was doing real quick. Chris told me to stick around, and I didn't see it on the agenda, so I didn't want to mess something. That's all.
I, I think since it's tabled, it's, I mean, I'd call and talk to him myself, too, if I need to.
But I haven't talked to him about it in all these months, so. It's just letters back and forth with Glenn, so I'm not sure what the issue is.
Yes, no action on streets there.
Thanks, Glenn.
Our next item, P P twenty-two-fourteen, North Work Industrial Park, Section Four. Petitioners, Wark County Redevelopment Commissioned by Steve Rowley, Executive Director. The owners are Phoenix Properties L L C by Brian Hurst, owner, and Wark County Redevelopment Commissioned by Steve Rowley, Executive Director. Approximately one hundred and eighty-three point four-six acres on the east side of State Road fifty-seven, approximately one mile south of the intersection of State Road fifty-seven and State Road sixty-eight. Says Lot eleven in North Work Industrial Park, Section Three, as recorded in two thousand and twenty R zero zero eight eight three one, and part of Outlet A in North Work Industrial Park, Section One. Uh, it's Greer Township, seven four nine eighteen four nine, advertised in the standard September first of two thousand and twenty-two. They are requesting no improvements to Nobles Chapel Road.
Jim Morley, Jr., project engineer. Uh, this is the same project that came in front of you all at Drainage Board. I passed out an exhibit that looked something like this. Lot five accesses the existing industrial park drive, uh, and Lot eleven accesses existing Nobles Chapel Road. And those are the only two billable sites being created by this plat. And so we would ask that no road improvement be required for North Work Industrial Park, Section Four.
Bobby, any comments?
I have no issues with this.
Make a motion to approve P P two-two dash fourteen.
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Next item, P P twenty-two-fifteen, Stall Landing. Petitioners, Wolfson Young L L C by Rodney Young, Managing Member. The owners are Wolfson Young L L C by Rodney Young, Managing Member, and No Properties L L C by N Allen No, Owner. Approximately eight point eight-eight acres located on the south side of Stall Road, zero feet south of the intersection of Stall and Citadel Circle, Ohio Township twenty-six and nine. Says advertised in the standard September first of two thousand and twenty-two. They're requesting no improvements to Stall Road with an internal roadway being privately maintained.
Jim Morley, Jr., project engineer. Same project we discussed at the Drainage Board had an exhibit that looked something like this. We are not, uh, there's no new improvements being, uh, happening up at the Stall Road area along the west side of the existing or the old I T T building. There is an existing private drive, uh, that's in an easement, and it stopped at roughly about forty feet short of what is going to be Lot Two, which is the empty field now. And we've provided road plans, uh, to basically extend the road that lasts forty feet and provide a turnaround area.
Just curious, what's the size of that parcel that's being broken up?
Hmm, that's down. I've got it back there.
That's okay.
I don't remember off the top, maybe five, six, seven acres, something like that.
Bobby, any comments on this?
The street plans are in order for properly maintained roadway. Uh, they're just extending what's already existing out there and then putting in turnaround here.
You guys want Lot Two?
Yeah.
And then I believe we're adding a stop sign and a street sign as well.
Yeah. I was pretty close at five.
Close.
I make a motion to approve P P dash twenty-two dash fourteen.
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
We have two requests for releases of surety. Uh, C twenty-one oh three-three, Hen Litter Construction, Inc., by Mark Hen Litter. We're holding a letter of credit totaling seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifty-three and thirty-nine cents, guaranteeing the commercial driveway completion. They've had one year, and the surety expires October eighth of two thousand and twenty-two. And the county engineer has visited the site and signed off on the construction.
Crowds have been constructed, recommend release of the surety.
Make a motion to release the surety.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Right.
My motion carries three zero.
Next one, C twenty-one oh six-eight, Westfall RV Storage by Carl Westfall, the owner, holding a letter of credit totaling forty-four hundred, guaranteeing commercial driveway completion. Said one year, and this surety expires September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two. County engineer has also visited this site and signed off on it.
Yeah, this was actually for a removal of a temporary access. We held a letter of credit to ensure that it got removed and, and the ditch restored correctly. And all that has been done, and recommend releasing the surety.
Make a motion to release.
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
We have a sidewalk acknowledgement that has been filed for Baywater at Berkshire Phase One, Macon Corporation by Daniel Uvler, the president. Baywater Drive at two thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight lineal feet, Highbury Court at five hundred and seventy-seven lineal feet. We're holding a letter of credit for twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, guaranteeing the construction. The surety expires October eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. They have had three years.
Sidewalks are completed, recommend acknowledging them.
Make a motion to acknowledge sidewalks for Baywater, Berkshire Phase One.
No, second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
Our last item is a street acceptance that has been filed for Baywater at Berkshire Phase One, Macon Corporation by Daniel Uvler, President. Baywater Drive, one thousand, one hundred and twelve lineal feet, Highbury Court, two hundred and forty-two lineal feet. And we're holding twenty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars in letter of credit, guaranteeing the construction. This expires October eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-two, and they have had three years. And this one has not been signed off on.
There's a small punch list that the developer said that he can get done, but there is a concern, one of the residents had posted it, have placed a permanent basketball goal in the right of way between the sidewalk and the back of curb, and it hangs over into the streets. And with that, uh, we'd ask that that structure be removed from the right of way. And I believe Danny had some concerns with doing it himself, so I'm not sure.
I, I spoke with Danny Uvler, the developer, prior to this meeting. I think there's two things on the punch list. One's a stop bar striping, one's raising a curb inlet. Danny said he could get both those done in the next month. He's already called the striping guy to come out and do that, and he'll raise the casket himself. Uh, but the other third thing on there is this basketball goal. And evidently, they've been trying to get this person to remove it for quite some time. Um, and with no luck, though evidently the person doesn't want to move it, is my understanding. And so Danny's trying to figure out how he gets his streets accepted with this basketball goal there. He said, you know, he said, I got the equipment to come pluck it out of there, but it's somebody's private property located on county property. And so Danny doesn't know that he has the right to go pluck something out of the ground on county right of way that's somebody else's private property.
Legal counsel, this is why you make the big bucks. How do we proceed?
The biggest. So the, is there any written communication, you know, between the developer?
My understanding is there's been written communication between, um, the home builder's legal counsel and the person, is my understanding. I was not copied on that. Um, I don't know that, I mean, my client sure has the equipment, but I don't know that my client has the legal right on county property to pull private property.
It's our roadside easement. So we have the, we have the authority to go do it, right?
Yeah, it's not been accepted for maintenance yet, but it is dedicated with public right of way.
Yeah, dedicated right of way.
So can we, do we order, can we order Danny to do it? To get, to get accepted? Is that, is that the way it happens?
Have we communicated with the?
That's what I would recommend be the, be the first step is communication from the county specifically saying, you know, this obviously has not been resolved in thus far. And just so you know, this isn't a problem between you and the developer. This is a problem between you and the county. And so they need to be made known and aware of that. So I think that's the next step, is a letter from the county.
I'd say a letter from the county and just saying, remove it. You got, what, fifteen days, thirty days? What's reasonable?
Thirty is what you want to give, but.
Well, meanwhile, we have a letter of credit that's going to expire.
That's done.
And so I guess we would like to know if the streets, uh, could be accepted subject to the, the striping and the curb inlet being raised, because that's something Danny can get done in the next month, next two weeks, probably. Um, but the goal, I have no idea when that, I mean, but that's not something that Danny can control on the goal side. And so a letter of credit doesn't affect that.
Oh, basketball goals, his responsibility or ours? In your eyes?
Normally, any encroachments in the right of way before the streets are maintained by the county is a responsibility of the developer to, to handle and remove. Any problems with, with any structures, um, problems with structures blocking drainage? There's, there's a lot of things like that. So this is in the right of way, so we would initially ask the developer to have it removed, because he's the one that's, uh, turning the streets over for maintenance.
We have two meetings between now and the expiration date.
I mean, and I believe that, I believe that good faith effort's been done on private industry's side of this to get it out of there. Um, but I don't know, I understand that his, I mean, and if it was a curb inlet need raised, a manhole need lowered, I mean, Danny'd do it in a heartbeat. Y'all know that. Um, in this situation, it's a private property owner, and I don't, maybe I'm wrong, I'm sure not an attorney. I don't know that Danny has any.
Restrictions and covenants.
I don't think Danny has, that, that, any covenants would be between Jago Holmes and the homeowner. It wouldn't be between Dan.
So, Councilor, we've got not quite thirty days between now and our October tenth meeting. If we could get that letter fired off and, and basically say we have a meeting on the tenth, or we're going to make a decision.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then that gives us hopefully time to handle all of this.
If instructed, I can hear Highway Department remove the basketball goal. Take pictures, remove it, lay it down, and take little pictures.
Hopefully, I'll have to get to that.
It's already damaged.
Okay.
It's got, the backboard's been knocked out of it in places, so we've got.
Well, if somebody comes by and hits it.
Yeah.
We're going to be named in a lawsuit.
If it comes back on the tenth, then Bobby, would you go out there, like, the sixth?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that what we would do? Okay.
So how do you, do you want to keep the letter of credit running? Do you want to accept it subject to what's the will of the board?
I, I think we, you saying Danny's going to make those two, because there's two issues, you said?
Yeah, there's a couple of them, let's say, that have the backs dropped, and then a couple of stop bars need to be extended.
Yeah, and so I know Danny's reached out to the striping contractor already. You all know Danny, he likes to move dirt when the sun shines. And so he's like, you think it could wait till a rainy, wait till a rainy day? But, I mean, if, if there's a deadline, I mean, he'll get out there prior to that, if you set a deadline.
I mean, I, I, Danny, I think's good, good for his word. These are not monumental issues, I don't think, for him. I, I'm good with, you know, releasing the, or the street acceptance based on, you know, that he gets those things done. I don't know how.
By the tenth? And if he doesn't have it done by the tenth, then.
I'll make sure it's done by the tenth.
Proven it subject to.
Does that include the ball goal?
Well, the, I think the ball goal's a separate issue. I, I mean, I, I know, I know Bobby says it's, it's Danny's issue, but, so he, he's got to, what, taken to court to get that done?
Yeah, I think Jago's in the letter as well, it says.
Or, or Jago's issue.
There's no basketball goals could be in front of the house even, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, to be honest with you, it's the only way that somebody other than the county gets it resolved is through the court system is, is the way it looks like to me, you know, and.
I, I just think the quickest, simplest way is have our county attorney send them a letter saying it needs to be removed. It's not removed at this date, we'll remove it for you.
Yep.
But, and, yeah, I, I mean, I don't know if we, I don't know if we say we seek the cost, you know, of removal, or, or we just say we're going to remove it. I, I don't think we should go out there and remove it. I think they should move it. They're the ones who put it down, so. But, I mean, what's about putting, we'll ask for a cost, removal cost.
In, in order to move about our day, I, I think it'd take fifteen seconds to pull that pole out.
Oh, it would, yeah. No, we can get it out pretty quick. So, I'm good without cost.
Say again?
I said I'm good without.
Me, too.
Okay.
So did you make a motion yet?
Uh, I, I, well, I thought I did, in a way. Yeah, I think, uh, you know, I, I think I made a motion that, uh, to, to go ahead and accept as long as the things are done by that date.
On July, uh, October tenth, was that date?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
And I'll second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
And, and the things are the non-basketball goal items, right?
Right.
Y'all are going to reach out on that side?
Right.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Okay, that is all the area plan Commissioner had.
Thank you, Molly. Okay, next order on the agenda is the approval minutes from the August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting.
I make, I make a motion to approve the August twenty-fifth regular session.
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero. Next order of business is our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, on the consent agenda tonight is the county auditor claims voucher report dates eight twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two, through nine thirteen, two thousand and twenty-two. Payroll dates, eight twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two, and, uh, nine twelve, two thousand and twenty-two. There's the weights and majors monthly report from July sixteenth through August fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. The clerk's monthly report ending in the month of July. Um, the hall, the two thousand and twenty-three holiday schedule and ordinance. Um, that would be a two thousand and twenty-two ordinance. Would that be ordinance number twenty?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, the two thousand and twenty-three pay schedule. Um, the Wark County Humane Society Miles for Mutt's Trail Use, and the E R A Pumpkin Giveaway Road Closure. And that's all on the consent agenda.
Okay, very good. I entertain a motion for the consent agenda approval.
What about two and three?
Those aren't on the, yeah, those aren't the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
So the other two items, um, under the county administrator business, we will table to, um, future meetings, the Land Township Treaty Appointment and the Family Literacy Awareness Proclamation due to other pieces that need to be added to those.
Okay. We need to make a motion to table items two and three under the administrator business.
So we?
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, next order of business is our county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. First thing on the agenda is a media conversion agreement that has been tabled, um, twice thus far. I believe we have representative from Fiddler here, um, available. But it's my understanding this was, it is some more, uh, discussion between the clerk and Fiddler to see what services are actually going to be rendered. As far as I understand, that has been clarified. Um, they're bringing here a proposal. That should spell out those terms more clearly. Um, and then if the commissioners are satisfied with the proposal, then they can approve it contingent upon presentment of a final contract that legal counsel reviewed.
Very good. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Grant Waters. I'm here on behalf of Fiddler Technologies, um, in support of the clerk's media proposal. Um, what that would be is digitizing marriage records back to eighteen eighty-two and, um, the software that, that is, that provided, which would house that data. Where we did come to an agreement with the Recorder's Office was we were going to share a server that they are already currently using to save cost to the clerk, um, upwards of twenty-five hundred dollars a year for that. Um, so familiarity with that, I know we had some discussion when it got tabled last was a service that we provided, which was Condor. And that's just a optional service, but it wasn't spelled out in the contract that way. So our legal team's going to edit that and get that over to you via DocuSign. So we have you're guys' correspondence officially go forward with that. But I wanted to present the cost, the total cost analysis, which would be on page three. So it's broken apart step by step through page one and two, but on page three, it'll show you overall what each thing is and then answer any general questions that you guys may have.
I know Heather explained this a little bit to us this morning. What's, what's the difference between the platform that the clerk will be using and what the current, the current platform that the recorder uses?
Yep, so we house both land records and vital record statistics. So one side is Avid, that's the land record side, which is Pat and the Recorder's Office. They will share a server that's hosted and secured for, um, off-site storage of all the data records, but they're separate in that same server. So that's where they share costs, and that's where they'll come in and go with that contract. But their, their interface is for the software, two separate softwares, one of which is vital statistics, one of which is land records.
Nice sense.
And so you're scanning these, these documents, and there's redundancy where this is, you said, is stored offsite and separate from our server?
Yep.
So there's a backup?
Backup, yep.
What, what is the Apex?
So that's a fancy name for basically the interface that the, the clerk's office will use to provide those digital records.
That's a software?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So Avid Apex, we try to name them something, um, random, I guess, I would say. They're, they're pretty obscure.
Can't just say software.
Yeah, yeah. It's going to sound cooler than it is.
I think you've answered my questions.
Yeah, I think there was just some questions.
How often do you come in and, and scan?
Yep, so are you saying in just particular to the clerk's office, or?
Yes.
Pat's, so with the clerk, it'll be a one-time onsite visit, that's, we, we requested 24-hour access, but we're gonna have to do eight-hour access due to the sheriff's office not allotting that in the Judicial Center. So they'll do three onsite days of scanning, and the, the team is onsite. Once they wrap up with that, they digitize everything, clean up the images, and then they send them into us so we can put them in the software.
And this is once a year, or?
Yeah, it'll be a one-time agreement to one year, one year, one phase of the contract, so what, what this will take is 1882 to 1923, volumes one through 55, out of the book, scanning them and digitizing them, so then they're easily accessible through the, the software.
Okay. So this is an, an ongoing?
Not until you see my face again to ask for more. More phases of the budget, it's, uh, I, it's all dependent upon what the clerk's request was, where Pat and the recorder's side, they have a ton of data, all the way back to 2010, I believe. Of them storing their digital data, so they're probably in here more than I am, but, um, yeah, it's a one-time.
We saw some documents from 1813 this morning. It's gonna be very careful, right?
Yes, and that's why we bring the experts in to do the scanning, I just, uh, I just run the, the tech side.
Okay. Everything, well, so we've got a proposal, and then they'll have to send us a, a contract, so there's, is there really anything to approve here?
No, I mean, it's all conditioned upon receipt of the contract approval, it's served by legal counsel, so.
So we need to consent us to approve them to send the.
Yes.
I'm good with it.
Just validating cost, so I'll send that to you guys directly.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next, um, I'm gonna move the, uh, discussion of the business, the construction manager's contractor under the sheriff's items, he's gonna discuss that, um, under his gen item, so. We'll move forward to then ordinance, um, amending capital improvement plan. Do you have a number for this one?
Uh, yes, 2022-21.
Okay. And I'm passing them out now. This is just a simple amendment to the capital improvement ordinance. Steve Rolliver, he's welcome to comment on it as well, but it's just amending the capital improvement ordinance to include projects that will be paid using, um, added funds at some point this year, possibly, if not this year, then in the future.
So, all the changes in this document are redlined, which is great, thank you, makes it easy to talk to them quickly. That's pretty straightforward, I think. So, need a motion to approve the amendment. Make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-21, amending the capital improvement plan.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you. The last thing is an ordinance amending use. Amending the use of county vehicles and fringe benefit policy, the code ordinances, this is just a simple amendment to update the county's, um. Fringe benefit policy as it relates to county vehicle use to be consistent with current IRS regulations, specifically with what are called qualified non-personal vehicles. Prior version of the ordinance. Limited that definition as it relates to county, the county to only law enforcement vehicles, while the IRS publications have expanded that definition of what falls within that category. To more vehicles than just law enforcement, um, and there is a specific. Definition, you could say, or specific categories that fall under that definition that we make reference to. But just to bring this up to date with what the current IRS regulations are, that's all this ordinance is doing. In this, I assume would be.
22.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-22. Use of county vehicles and fringe.
Second.
Great, I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Mr. President, that's it for me.
Okay, next order of business is, uh, county highway department.
Thank you, I had one item tonight, um, we had the bid opening for the, uh, signal modification for Lincoln and Eppworth. We solicited three companies and also advertised. In the, uh, newspaper. I ran twice in the newspaper, but I only received one bid. From Regal. This is to add dedicated left turn arrows to the intersection. Much better. That's the best I've done so far. The total bid price is $37,500. And that is close to our engineers estimate, and I'd recommend, uh, approval subject to the review of the, the bid for compliance.
Who, who was that vendor, Bobby?
Regal.
Regal.
Yes.
And were, were they the only one that bid?
Yes. They did our last traffic signal at Stoll and Eppworth, and we were pleased with that work, so.
Okay.
I know we, we've got a lot of requests for a left turn here, so I'd like to continue with, with the project.
Okay, I make a motion to approve, uh. The only vendor Regal for the single, single, uh, modification in Lincoln and Eppworth, based on review of the contract and legal counsel's proof.
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, next order of business is our county grants department.
Thank you, Mr. President, Debbie Bennett Steersman, Warwick County Grants Development Director, here for a couple of reasons this evening, first of all, I brought with me contracts for two of the ARPA competitive, uh, projects that were. Approved previously at a commissioners meeting, one is between Warwick County and Rivertown Pickleball Club for $500,000 for construction of 10 new courts at Van. And the second is a contract between Warwick County and Booneville Now for the construction of the gazebo in the courthouse square, $84,980. Do have copies of both, the contracts were, uh, written by county attorney, and I have received their certificates of liability insurance and their W9s.
The last approval was for the funding, this is the approval of the actual contract received with, right?
Correct. Correct.
Approve both with one motion or separately?
Both projects?
Yes.
I would probably do them separately.
Very good. So, let's entertain a motion first for the Rivertown Pickleball contract.
I make a motion to approve the Rivertown Pickleball contract for 500,000.
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Next one would be the contract with Booneville Now to build the gazebo.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay, the second is gonna be a little bit longer than that, I placed, uh, folders on your desk, and in those folders contain the, uh, projects on an Excel sheet. As they were approved by the core group last week, out of the county, ARPA lost revenue funds. I think the second sheet behind it shows you the score sheet, and then the last shows you how much has been funded to date out of that fund. I have 17 projects to review with you. Behind your sheets, uh, in order are a short synopsis of each of the projects that were recommended by the core group to submit to the commissioners for approval. There were projects that were tabled, I did not bring those with me because we'll review those again in two weeks. So I can start down the list one at a time if you want me to, or however you want me to do it.
Okay, with that, one at a time.
Okay, first project is Judicial Center new flooring, total amount of $356,361.72. The project is to remove all carpet and vinyl composition tile from the Ju, Judicial Center's existing offices, courtrooms, and kitchen break areas, the floor. In the corridors and the bathrooms will remain, new carpet and hard surface flooring will be provided to replace the existing that will be removed. The core group recommended the entire amount of $356,361.72.
To my understanding, that that building has never had new carpet?
No.
So.
Only offices that flooded.
Yeah, I think they're like 23 years old or something.
I know that I've been showing holes in carpets and it's, uh, it's bad, so I'm good with this.
What do we need?
Just make a motion on every one of them.
Individual as you go through.
Make a motion to approve Judicial Center new flooring?
Second.
First and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay, the second is for, uh, the assessor's office, new pictometry Eagle View software, requested them out for six years with $542,865. The assessor wants to enter a new contract with Eagle View Pictometry for software imagery to complete assessments accurately and on time. Eagle View's high-resolution aerial imagery allows assessor to see more from the sky than possible from the ground with a clarity level that satellite imagery cannot match. The new pictometry three-inch versus the current nine-inch photos are, are much clearer and more precise. This is valuable to the assessor, Stormwater APC, Economic Development, and Highway Department, and anyone else using the GIS in Warwick County. The core group mech, recommended four years or until the end of 2026, that's as far as we can commit funding, and the amount is approximately $361,910. The assessor said she would, it was an agreement with that, as long as she could get budgeting for the final two years, where she has, uh, received it in the past.
Say that again? So she's.
So it's a six-year contract she has to enter into, so we would, the ARPA funding would be funding the first four years. The last two years she would take out of the way she normally does it, through budgeting through the different departments.
Okay, got it.
But this is a contract, and we can't guarantee those two years.
Kind of want to mark them.
I said that too, but it's always been a six-year contract. She told me that today.
Have we, she provided the contract?
Um, I don't think, I don't know that I have it, I've got a proposal, not a contract.
Cause that would be kind of. We could enter into a contract, you know, confirming obligation of funds for four of the six years, but the contract would need to be amended to say that the county, in the event during years five and six, the county is not able to obligate the funds, then. It's not gonna pay the funds, so I think that's, it would just, the contract would need to be amended to reflect the fact that the county's not obligating itself for the final two years of the contract.
I can't, I think the proposal's in phases, three phases, and she said today that that would pay for the first two phases, so I'll have to tell her, we can only contract for the two phases, okay?
So, John, we're okay with four years on that?
Yeah, I think you're, you're able to approve the recommend, recommendation of the core group for four years, as listed.
We'd have to approve the contract later, right?
Yeah, it's not been approved.
Very good.
Make a motion to approve the new pictometry Eagle View software?
Second.
Four years.
Go.
Sorry, Dan.
Second.
For $361,091. So I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Okay.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay, the third is timekeeping system, $50,000. Uh, the timekeeping system would be, consist of purchasing of Wright Stuff software for countywide timekeeping. The software would work seamlessly and integrate with the sheriff's existing timekeeping system. The system would save time, money, and reduce human error, non-exempt employees can have their schedules built into the system. There would only be two time clocks, one at the county highway and one at the parks. Core group recommended the entire amount of five, $50,000 plus, there's $25,000 match from the county commissioners.
So. What about the highway department, Bobby, does this, does this affect you?
Yeah.
Save you time, money, and energy?
I don't know yet, depends on the, uh, what software we're using, and I haven't seen the software, so I don't know. But we'll have two different locations, and I assume, will it report back to one specific location?
No.
Yeah, so that's a benefit.
Most of the time you can access these on your telephone. Cellphone.
Then we'd be requiring the employees to do that, then?
I, I don't know the software either, Bobby, I'm just saying, the one I just got, you access through your cellphone. And then if you try to get slick, it tells you where you entered your budget, so.
So since you have, you know, an apartment with many employees, I don't know if it's the largest apartment, but one of the largest departments. And you have the most unique schedule, I'd like for you to see this before we make a decision, that's my two cents worth.
Yeah, I mean, we can table this for two weeks. Sheriff, what do you think about this?
Yes, we're currently using it, right?
Yeah, Sheriff Wilder, uh, we are, we're just in the, uh, we're still doing our paper and, uh, doing it simultaneously, we have to run like three payrolls to see how everything works. But it's gonna be, it's kind of how each department would wanna do it, we used a time clock for some, we're using like our deputies, cause they run a unique schedule, actually don't hit a time clock. You can, uh, work with Wright Stuff, and there's different ways, you can do time clock, you could do what you're saying, apps on phones, you can have, uh, different rules. Yeah, you can have different rules for different people, because they never come to the all of a sudden thing, so, uh, we're real happy, like, startup, but we, not all the way up and running yet, but we're, it's gonna save us time. I think in the long run, and you can put permissions, vacation schedules, it's, it's a complicated, it's as much you wanna put into it or as little as you wanna do, but pretty impressed with it.
Thanks, sir. What do you think?
I'd like for Bobby to see it.
So what, we, we table this until, is it what?
I'm, I'm fine with that, yes.
You just, you just want Bobby to make, to lay his eyes on it, see?
Because, Bobby, you have all kinds of spare time during the.
Yeah.
Put it on your phone and play with it.
Yeah, I know.
I'll make a motion to table the timekeeping system until, uh, next meeting.
Is it, is that what you want tabled?
That's fine, yeah, I'm fine with that, yeah.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay, the next is an assessor sign for the Ohio Township Office, $5,135.86. Purchase and installation of a sign at the 8211 Bill Oak's Drive, Suite D, Newburgh. To date, there's never been a sign to show the location of the office for 20 years, this will be putting a sign there.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay, the next is scales, Scales Lake Park gatehouse plan and design, $9,850 for Morley Engineering to do conceptual renderings. And budgeting for either a new gatehouse or renovation of the existing. The core group recommended the entire amount with the involvement of the commissioners and the parks board on the design.
Steve Rolliver, you support this, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay, next is a multi-function and printer, well, I think it's a processing area and printer replacement for the treasurer's office, $6,689. It's the purchase of one Kyra Sierra multi-function system, one network printer, six black and white printers. Uh, the bid was government discount, trade-in allowance for current equipment on hand, price includes setup, delivery, installation, and initial operator training. All are Kyra Sierra, Kyra Sierra, can't say it. Uh, the treasurer will own the equipment and not lease, checked with the treasurer today, she does not have funds for lease in her budget. Core group, um, recommended the entire amount, but checking with the treasurer on getting quotes from Alpha existing contractor, and Sherry Severs. To see if they had that brand or had something compatible with the pricing.
So again, we're just, uh, discussing the funding here, not necessarily the contract. Council, I think the discussion that we've had internally with the core group, I know we weren't able to make that meeting, was that, uh, you know, we have a blanket contract with a vendor, and, and this piece of equipment is not with that vendor, it's probably a different brand, I don't know what the specifications are, so there's a little digging going on there.
Yeah, I think we'd want to verify that the current contract that we have with the vendor does not, is not exclusive and prevent the, you know, acquisition of another printer from a different vendor.
Yep, yep. So again, just approving the funding here, not, not the total end result.
There is actually, I think, six pieces of equip, no, six, eight pieces of equipment. She stated that this is a current vendor that she's been using in her office for quite some time.
So I'm, I'm okay at least with the funding part for now. If you guys are.
Yeah, I'm good with it, just want to make sure it doesn't break any of our existing agreements. So you need a motion to approve, Terry?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Okay, the next is an unsafe building program, fifty thousand dollars. The county would be establishing a revolving loan fund to assist in the abatement of unsafe buildings. Leans and judgments could be placed on the abated properties to recapture funds spent on the abatement to replenish funds for future projects. The core group recommended starting with this entire amount.
I believe that's a, a big asset that enables us to work with the ordinances that we have, so.
Make a motion to approve.
One second.
First and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Okay, the next is a new shelter house at Scales Lake Park, one hundred and three thousand dollars. The quote we have included demolition of existing and construction of a new shelter house at Scales Lake with the design same as the, the existing shelter house at Friedman Park. Uh, they, they will use their existing foundations. The core group recommended the entire amount with Commissioner Philippi working with the park superintendent on the design.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor. Motion carries three zero.
Okay, next project is new radios for the commissioners, seventeen thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars. Purchase of three new radios for the commissioners to have the ability to monitor emergencies in their respective districts. Additionally, each commissioner will be able to support the other two when emergencies happen. This will assist the commissioners become actively involved and concerned for their constituents on a day-to-day basis. The core group recommended the entire amount.
Make the motion to approve.
Second. I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Next is stormwater improvements, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Replace damaged underground drainage pipes at waterfront at Old Hickory Estate subdivision. This has already been bid, and I believe Bobby's it under contract?
It's, it's under contract, under construction.
Okay, core group recommended the entire amount.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Next is a nuisance, nuisance property program, fifty thousand dollars. Establish a program to regulate the control of growth and requirement cutting and removal of weeds and other rank vegetation on all parcels of real estate on residential and commercial properties in the unincorporated areas of Warwick County. The fines will be imposed on property owners with leans or judgments, and upon payment, funds will revolve to regulate other properties. Core group recommended the entire amount.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Sorry, I lost my, lost my thoughts there. Uh, where am I? Uh, I have a first and a second all in favor. Okay, motion carries three zero.
Okay. Windows eleven computer upgrade, six hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars with an asterisk. Microsoft will discontinue the support of Windows ten on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Based upon the recent inventory of county IT equipment, one hundred and seventy-five current computers will not support Windows eleven and will need replaced. Also, twenty twenty-one standard office will be installed on all computers. The estimate we were given at the meeting was the only estimate received to date. We do know there are, one at least, that's two, that's going to be less than that amount of money. The core group recommended giving up to the entire amount or which, whatever the lesser bid was, because I don't have those.
So there was a lot of discussion around this at the core group meeting. Um, I, I think we need to get, you know, two solid estimates. I do know that this, this larger estimate, um, included imaging the old computers to the new computers, so it's not just hardware. Um, however, I would like, I would like for us to think a little bit more about this one.
I agree. I, I'm not sure that this is the right place to get the monies to pay for this. I think this should, this should be a rotating, every five years, something, you get a new computer, this should be a rotate, on a rotating scale, and it should be managed that way. We should appropriate money every year for computer replacement.
I, I don't disagree. I think, um, I don't know, Terry, do you want to talk on that? We, we talked about it in our meeting, and it was, it was, it was said that the council doesn't have that kind of money to buy upgrade computers, so.
Well, if you do it on a yearly, annual basis, you don't have to put out six hundred thousand dollars.
Bob, that's what we would do in business, but I guess, I don't know.
This, this is a, an October twenty twenty-five end date, today being twenty twenty-two, we've got just a little bit of time to, to make sure we're doing this correctly.
But, you know, then again, if you go through and you, you do this lump sum upgrade to computers, in five years, you're gonna have to do another lump sum upgrade. And it's just the wrong way to do it.
I agree.
Even still, the funding, I, as long as the funding is obligated by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, and, and to Terry's point, we still have two of the three bids in, so there's no real urgency as of right now to approve this proposal.
I'd rather just table it to the next meeting and think about it.
Make a motion to table?
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Okay, the next is a new vehicle for the assessor's office, twenty-six thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-five cents. Purchase of a new all-wheel-drive vehicle for the assessor's office to replace the small compact Kia, which doesn't have the ground clearance to reach many properties in this area, many other reasons. The match from the assessor is eight thousand dollars. Uh, the core group recommended the entire amount with the match from the assessor of eight thousand dollars.
I'm assuming that match is from a trade-in? Or how's that work?
I do not have it, she had it in her budget, I believe. I've got, you should have detailed papers there, but I can't remember if it's from her budget. Yeah, yeah.
Properties in Ohio.
Yes. Oh, yeah, good luck. No, uh, she's keeping the Kia, she had eight thousand, I remember seeing her budget in there.
Did they say what kind of vehicle?
Yeah.
That's a Chevy Traverse. Government pricing, foundation, like, Traverse, while she's like.
And it was at a discount.
Make a motion to approve.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and approve and, and second this motion, but once again, I feel this is the wrong place to be coming for the money for a new vehicle. I think it should be appropriated annually through the.
Budgeted annually, you mean?
Yes.
In a, in a fund?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Yes.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Okay, the next is rebranding for Warwick County, five hundred thousand dollars. Warwick County EDC wants to create a new county logo that is identifiable, welcoming signage throughout the county, overpass, and wayfinding signs that will greet residents and visitors as they enter the county to replace the existing. Also, create marketing materials that will help promote Warwick County as a great place to live and do business. EDC is matching with three hundred and fifty thousand from Edit. Core group recommended the entire amount with EDC match, up three hundred and fifty. I've gave you exam, there's examples of what he's, of what, uh, EDC's looking at in your packets, digging down in there. Um, he also, uh, Steve Rowley also provided some existing signage that people see as they enter Warwick County, and they're just, um, street signs, basically. He's, the name of the company is in there as well.
So this would include different, okay, yeah, projects, example, different signs in, in, um.
He gave examples of existing, I don't know if those are in there, what they look like when you drive in Warwick County. It's got a menu-style budgeting. Yep, save more, you want to say?
Steve, I got a couple of questions for you here. I, uh, I'm not wrapping my head totally around this mainly because I haven't had a chance to pay attention to all the details of all of this. Um, I'm a little hesitant with, with the five hundred. Um, so help me justify that a little more, and then this, kind of like the scale.
So the bud, the budget I gave you, like, Scales Lake, you know, the, I'm hoping that we put a kind of a small group together that provides feedback and, and approvals on these pieces, but in my opinion, I think everyone knows Warwick County is in the top tier of communities in the state of Indiana, and the best place to work, play, and raise a family. And, uh, our branding is kind of non-existent, and when they say, where do you live, and sick of telling people that we're just east of Evansville. And, uh, so I provided a menu-style budget. When you talk about the dollars that are needed, one big piece is there's a big, um, Edworth reconstruction project on the intersection. There's a piece of property right there off of Edworth at sixty-six that has the most traffic every single day as you come into our community, and working within DOT to find a spot to put a digital kind of welcome board, kind of like you'd maybe see outside the University of Evansville there, right there. We can not only have branding there, welcome to Warwick County, with our town names on it as well, but also something's going on, you know, Flair in the Square, or something's going on up in Linville Park, we can put community messages on there to share that. A digital message board by itself, depending on what type you get, is three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars.
Say that helps understand the.
But there's a whole lot of other pieces that go into it, so really, when I asked for this, it was kind of an up to. I'm not saying we're even going to spend that amount of money, but if we're gonna get some of these pieces in there, and as you're coming in and driving in, I'm out on my bike a lot in and out of the county, and, you know, now leaving Spencer County, entering Warwick County is about all you get at the county line. And I just think Warwick County, we're in a wonderful place, we've done a lot of wonderful things, north, south, east, west. I really feel like, um, you know, people should know when they're entering our community.
Steve Onyuk says amount requested five hundred, then it says match money three fifty. I assume that's out of your budget.
It's, we have those funds in Edit, and so we do not have those dollars appropriated yet, but Edit is kind of something where we don't spend the money that comes in every year. We save for larger projects throughout the community, and so those funds are available.
Well, my, my ask was, is what about tourism board? Can they, can they put any money into this?
And so some of those dollars, like for public art budget, were gonna come from tourism, they can use some of their dollars, so I'm certainly expecting them to help out with that. There's some public art pieces that go into a larger plan, but I certainly expect them to help.
I know there's limitations on.
What they can spend.
What they can spend money on because of the way our tourism board is set up.
Yep.
Uh, just as long as we, I, I think it's fair to share out of that bucket because.
I agree.
They're gonna be the biggest, I say that, that fund is gonna be probably the biggest benefactor of it.
I agree.
Uh, but, but however, I, I support this, I support the whole rebranding thing. It's so frustrating when we have the, you know, I put on softball tournaments for fifteen years, had, you know, tens of thousands of people here over in, in Van Road Park, and they, they thought they were in Evansville, Indiana. So it, it's very frustrating, even with the, the golf tournament, people are still, they're in Evansville, Indiana, so I totally support this.
Evansville on their side.
Yep.
So I think, I think it's, I think it's something, a good project.
Okay.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve.
Total amount?
Yes, sir.
Up two.
Up two.
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Okay, the next is new, uh, county highway vehicles. Estimated eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of six new trucks, five new tractors for the county highway department. The core group recommended up to the entire amount. However, Commissioner Philippi will work with the superintendent to determine which vehicles to replace and which to keep or.
And Bobby, my. Also, they wouldn't be lump sum coming in all at once, it will be over the three-year period, I guess.
Over three years.
A tractor this year, two years, two next year, two the following year, and trucks, you can't, I, I'll be lucky to get this many trucks in two years' time anyway.
Just answered one of my questions.
And my, mine's a twenty thirteen right now, so I'd like to get mine in there.
What, what are the, what are the tractors?
Mine's a two thousand and six.
What are the tractors?
They're mowing tractors.
Yep.
Our current ones, um, we've got three close to ten years old now.
Yep.
And we have several, several breakdowns, loss of productivity with the series tractors that we.
Are those, are the ones, do you know, those ten years old? I thought we got those.
We bought those.
No, no, no. You bought the mowers?
Yeah.
Yes, there's three Land Pride mowers. These are for the tractors themselves, not the mowers.
I thought we.
We've got three new mowers and a, a boom mower, that's fairly new, but the tractors themselves, uh, two of them, I think, were, were used when we got them, and then we bought three in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. Was when we bought those, so we have five total.
And that's the E-series tractors?
We have, we have two E-series, three D-series, I believe.
We won't be going back with the economy line, will we?
No, 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 no.
Thank you.
No, they didn't get to the full time I was hoping to get of them, but there's also several designs for us, so.
You good?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor. Motion carries three zero. Thank you, Bobby, I appreciate the fact that this is kind of a three-year deal.
These will be electric tractors.
Okay, the next is new radios for Scales Lake Park employees, seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Purchase of seven new radios in order to provide for radio system communications between employees in areas of Scales Lake Park. Currently, there's no provided communication for employees outside of the phone system at the gatehouse, a single phone in the maintenance building. The radios would allow patrol, laborers, groundskeepers, and maintenance staff to communicate the needs of visitors and campers, or issues that may arise. The safety of the park staff and its visitors would also be improved. Core rec, group recommended the entire amount.
Been on board with this? I know Audrey is.
Audrey is, and I, and I have not heard back from him.
I mean, they need to be able to talk.
I'm going to the parks board meeting on the twentieth, so.
So.
I'm sure something would turn down.
Yeah.
So Terry, these, um, what kind of radios are these, thirty-three hundred?
They're motor, motorola, I put them in the packet there.
I mean, are those the right radios for this application?
Probably so. They, those are, those are a little bit lesser than what, uh, Stormwater and, um, um, the highway have.
Still, still durable.
Good, good ingress protection.
Okay. All right, you good with this, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve the new radios for park employees?
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
And the last one for today, the MA Command Center, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Replacing the current mobile command trailer with a twenty-five, twenty-two-foot walk-in mobile command center. The existing, uh, command center is a forty-foot trailer and very labor intense to move and operate, ultimately affecting response capabilities when needed during an emergency or event. The mobile unit would significantly impact the effectiveness of emergency operations. Events throughout the county where larger groups gather and help surveil in areas with thousands of people attending. Warwick EMA does respond to all disasters and emergencies in Warwick County and the EMA continues to support all COVID related activities and events. The core group recommended the entire amount. And I will say they had support letters from almost all the other cities and towns and fires and police units that this was needed.
I know that I was a little bit concerned about the amount initially, but then Jake described to me how difficult it is just to get it even, get the existing command center out of the barn is a task, right, Jake? This also is one of those things that wouldn't be just for Warwick County. It'd be on call for all the counties and district ten, so. As I've continued to think about it, I've supported it more and more, so I'm good with it.
It's an expensive truck. And it's not so expensive when you need it, too. So. Wait for Dan.
Well, I just looking at all the different letters of support from it looks like it's almost from everyone. Did I see Newburgh? Didn't see Newburgh. Looked like it was supported for almost by everybody in Warwick County.
I'm still getting letters, like I'll get an email every so often with another letter from another community or another department. That's just we have to date.
Quick question, you may have told me this. What's the plan for the old one? Come get it?
Director remade, so the old one was, is a grant vehicle, purchased on grant.
Yep.
So I have a letter from the grant lady explaining what we did, we would need to do to it. Her best answer was if we could sell it and put the money right back into what we bought.
Okay.
So if we, I don't know what it would appraise for at this point, but if we, because we'll strip out what we can to use in a new mobile command. So whatever we get out of it, we could use toward the new mobile command, either by radios, monitors, computers, that kind of things. But her best solution or answer was use it toward another another product, that's a project to replace it with.
Got it.
Good deal.
Well, I, I mean, I've, unfortunately, we've had a few catastrophes in this in this county and the the existing command center has been used before. And I I think to have that for our emergency management services folks, law enforcement, I think it's just a compliment to our disaster building. And so I would support this project.
Is that also a motion?
I make a motion to approve the EMA command center.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
I motion carries three zero.
Thank you very much. That's all I got.
Thank you, Debbie. Thanks for all the hard work.
Yeah, thank you and Sherry for and Heather for all your work on. I know it's, I know we're going through a lot more paper here recently.
Okay. Sheriff? You are against.
We're all out of money.
I was just back here making my wish list. Sheriff Mike Wilder, I'm here for the recommendation for our CMC. You guys or someone through the commissioner's office put out RFPs for our jail project. The they were due back and those were given to us. Our jail committee, we met last Wednesday to go over them. We met as a group along with Andrew Skinner, county attorney. We only had one RFP that was given to us. We sat down as a group, reviewed the RFP. It met all the criteria that was in it. And we would make the recommendation move forward with the one company that returned. They meet, like I said, met all their criteria and that recommendation would be for Garmong Construction Company to be the CMC on our jail project. So if you have any questions, I can try to answer them.
Sheriff, just in case anybody's watching online, this is, this is a lot more than just a jail. This is more of a security center.
Yeah.
Offices and and a lot of support.
It's currently our sheriff's office or jail, potentially dispatch, any other thing. I mean, we're in design phases. We're in discussion phases of what should and what shouldn't be in the building. You know, we had a feasibility done, that study done that was presented showing the needs for what is needed. So from there, moving forward, it'll be kind of up to, you know, council commissioners, the committee of what all goes in the building, you know? And I mean, obviously, it's the sheriff's office and in the jail, two priorities, but rather central dispatch continues in that building or in different buildings, rather probation, community service, there's a lot of things there. Obviously, everything you add is space, money. So those things are still being determined right now in design phase. But we're wanting to get the CMC on board, believe that they can help us in some of our design phases early, site locations and things like that. Another thing I know we've discussed is a owner's rep also. So that'll probably be a discussion also at some time. And I know an owner's rep should probably be, that's going to protect the county also. And that should probably be looked at being done soon, too, as we go through these phases. And as those things and discussions happen, eventually, at some point, we're going to come up with the design cost. And I think those times, that's where you start coming and interview some meetings with, for the public to have feedback from the public. I don't know the county attorneys probably a little bit better exactly how that timeline goes, but we're just in those initial stages, you know, Tilly Baker, I know, comes to the table, starts helping us with financing. You get all your ducks in a row and then you kind of present to your community what you're looking at doing.
Well, I'm I'm not on the committee, but I know Commissioner Philippi is. And how many members are on that committee, Mike? Nine?
Seven, I think. There's a county, there's a county commissioner, county councilman, the sheriff, the jail commander, prosecutor, judge and one community member.
Well, I just want to say I appreciate the committee. This is, this is a huge decision, a huge step, commitment. But I I appreciate the committees looking at this and their due diligence on this. Because I know I've I've received feedback from a couple of different vendors that, you know, the committee's asking the right questions, the tough questions. You guys are not just looking at plans and just saying, hey, this is, this is good enough. You're making changes that that are based on Jeremy Holder. I've heard compliments on him. He doesn't just accept what showed across the table. He he he's engaged. And 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 that's all I can ask for a commissioner is that the committee is engaged and they ask the tough questions. And 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 just, you know, we want to hold, we want to hold people, you know, accountable. You know, these, it's going to be a lot of taxpayers' dollars. And so I just appreciate the committee's hard work on this.
Thank you. Yeah, it is a lot of time.
We have one quick question. There's been talk about a different location for this facility. If that happens, do we have a plan for the old facility? That's still in the talking stages and planning stages?
Well, it's definitely in the planning stages because we have not picked a site location because like RQAW, which was chosen as our architect, that are helping us with site location and hopefully the CMC when they come on, stuff like that. You start with, you know, like the committee, like where do, where would be the ideal place? So you start there and then you just see, and we're kind of, that's where we started at, you know, like we want to be probably on the other side of town because it's where our community, we have the core board to go south, east, west with the, you know, the roundabout with the bypass now and so. So we kind of started, what would be the ideal location? But that's still in discussion phases and then is there feasible places to go from there? We're obviously exploring if where we're at, then kind of going a little bit further with the current building, you know, what do we do? And that's, I think, where we all have to summon, you guys get involved, too. I know we've discussed leaving, that is our central dispatch rather than community corrections or different probation or our defense, county defense, county. Public defender, thank you. That's going blank, you know, there. So there's a lot of people needing space and location. So that that space could definitely be allocated to different people if we choose, if that's the way, you know, I think the county chooses to, you know, move buildings or facilities or keep that building, which I think you would, keep the building in different things. So there is a lot of things going on. It's keeping me extremely busy. I appreciate Terry's been involved a lot with me, but we're going to have to bring more people to the table, make those decisions. Because moving forward, that goes into our design phases of of the new building, what's going to be in it, what's not and where they're going.
Sheriff, and not to elongate the meeting here, but, you know, since we're here having this conversation, we got a gentleman here from from a television station. You know, it's time to begin to to tell the story of why this is needed. That's the first step where we started. How many employees do you have now?
Well, now the numbers, I'd go up like a, I'm close to a hundred more if we count our reserves.
How many restrooms do you have in your building?
I have like one employee restroom, unisex, off the main office. I mean, and.
How many, how many conference rooms do you have?
Yeah, we're down to one. It's been makeshift. None.
So, you know, my point here is, you know, we always talk about Warwick County setting examples and you you don't have the amenities of a modern sheriff's department, period. So, you know, I think that's where that story begins and.
And I think we can easily tell that story and and I'd be more than happy to show people, we invite people out. You know, this isn't just because we don't have the restroom, we want, you know, but it's it's space, it's inmate space. Of COVID did help us for a while, but, you know, we were at our max with inmate space. We have no place for programs for our inmates. We have no place to do church groups, different things that in some requirements that have been handed down on the state for us and stuff. So we're we're maxed. We're in a thirty year old building that we've outgrown and especially on the administrative side of those things.
So counsel, back to the matter at hand here. We're here to talk about the response to the RFP. So let you take over the conversation here.
Well, the only thing that I think is left to do is to approve the committee's recommendation of the of the bid for the CMC, which is the only bid that was received by the committee. So just approve the jail studies committee recommendation to to contract with Garmong Construction for the construction manager as constructor services.
Okay.
And I believe the way Andrew, he's explained it is if you, it's then to negotiate into the actual contract with them is the sole.
Or accepting the recommendation today.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Sheriff.
To contract with Garmong. Commissioner Senator.
Yeah, I'm good.
So I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
I motion carries three zero.
And I have one other quick item and we may need a table where we can maybe do it today. I afforded you CPC, which is combined public communications to the telephone provider within the jail, not not the administrative side, but the inmate side and stuff. Our contract is up in a few months. But if we would renew now, they were giving us grant money, which was paying for the app and buying some shields. It's, it's, you know, who I would choose, I want to stay with, whether it's now or in five months or eight months. I can't remember when it expired. I think it's in eight months. But if we'll do it now, they've got a contract, which is, and all that was in an email. And I think the council's had a chance to review that.
There's no, no issues with that.
And they're paying, are they paying for the entire app or just?
Yes, the first year, the all that. They have grant monies. I don't know, I can't explain it, but they have it, it was in that, how they said that they'd set that up. They're also going to buy us a couple ballistic shields, donate, I guess, or grant, how they do that, what's the right terminology, but.
I'm good with it. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
I motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
At all, thank you.
I have nothing.
First and second all in favor.
Aye.
I motion carries three zero.
Five twenty four.
I think that sets a record for number phone calls. That's what I said. I said.